A Presbyterian Church in Bonita Springs, right in front of Bonita.
Could you speak up?
With me. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for, for life. And we thank you for this evening and the opportunity that, that this City Council has to deliberate. We pray for their wisdom. We pray that you would lead them in the way of truth. God, we pray that this horrible coronavirus might be whipped and that we can return to a measure of normalcy. And God, we pray for those who are serving our country around the world. We pray for their safety, for their help, and success in their missions. Blessed this evening, we pray in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Chris, would you lead us in the flag allegiance, please?
Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Debbie, if you have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Karamba. Councilman Pardon.
Here.
Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Yes.
Councilman Corey.
Here.
Councilman Gibson. Councilwoman Forbes.
Here.
Thank you, Debbie. Now we go to something a little new called approval of the agenda. And this is for the people who would like to speak at the, at the public comment period. Item number eight A is a zoning case. And it's first reading, and we don't need any public comment at that time. Also, eleven A and thirteen E are for public hearing. But I, please comment, you know, have an opportunity to speak on them when they come up on the agenda. Everybody understand that? To speak tonight, we, you need to fill out a speaker's form, which I believe is over at the desk. It gives you your name, your console, your, your district. And if you'd like to give your phone number, the maps of the, of the district shows a contact number for your representative. And put down what your concern is. So that if, if you're not satisfied tonight, we can, can work with you on that problem. Okay, now we're moving on to another new item called Mayor's Welcome. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. For coming. I'm Rick, your mayor. We, the people, live in a republic. We elect people to represent us. Bonita has four, six districts and six representatives. They are, they are from the right, from my right. District number one, Amy Karamba. District number two, Jesse Pardon, Jesse Pardon. Number three, Laura Carr. Number four, Chris Corey. And number five, Deputy Mayor Mike Gibson. And number six, Fred Forbes. In order for them to represent you, they need to hear from you. District maps are available with contact numbers. Last resort, call Mayor Rick at my home, two three nine 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 two three zero one eight, and speak clearly. Now we may have a public comment on the agenda. Thank you.
You want to do that? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, my name is Barbara Ogle, Carnoustie Court. And again, good evening to you both, to you all. Before the discussion, this is regarding green sheet 2012 377. Before discussing regarding the potential next steps for the bamboo property, I would like the council to consider meeting in a workshop environment to create a unified vision for the future of the property, aligning it with the downtown overlay. Perhaps even a citizens panel made up from businesses and the owners in the area and surrounding areas. It might make it easier when asking for future development proposals to have a vision for the property in place. So I'd like you to consider maybe meeting together in a workshop, working together to form a cohesive vision for the bamboo property. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'll be very brief. For the record, Dwight Esmond, Paradise Road area. Want to urge you to follow Barbara's suggestion about a workshop and to try to include the public if possible. Mention one other thing. Based on the appraisal, there was a part of the Magnus bid for the Levin lot. We know that a half acre lot was worth $500,000 pre-COVID. It was considered a fair price. So the Bamboo Village property should be worth over $5 million based upon that appraisal. And if we can get $5 million, that'll go a long way toward purchasing the golf course for stormwater retention. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anybody else, please? Now we have the first reading of eight A. Derek?
A zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs granting a variance from LDC Section 4-1893, which requires a street setback of 25 feet to allow a street setback of 20 feet, and from LDC Section 4-1894 Sub B, which requires a water body setback of 25 feet to allow a water body setback of 15 feet from the east for a single-family residence and accessory structures, and a 6.5-foot setback from the north for a single-family residence, and from LDC Section 4-489, which requires a side yard setback of 7.5 feet to allow a side yard setback of 6.5 feet for a single-family residence and accessory structures located at 27783 Hickory Boulevard, Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is just a first reading. It does not require a public hearing, but there is staff here if you have any questions.
Motion to move to second.
Second.
I could comment on this. The six and a half feet setback, the law says seven and a half feet. Is this setting a precedent so everybody comes in at six and a half feet if they want it?
No, it does not have any legal precedential value. It is a variance request that's allowed under the code.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have a motion and a second on the floor.
I have a motion and a second, yes. I'm, I'll move the motion.
Debbie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Pardon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, that'll come to you at your next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, now we have on for, it says for a short recess. Do we need a recess?
No.
No, anybody? Okay. Now we're moving on to this consent agenda. Now, the consent agenda is a staff report. The staff does a wonderful job. Is there anything that somebody wants to pull for discussion? Seeing that?
I motion to approve the consent. I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I'll, I'll second that, or did you? Okay, a call for a vote, Deb?
Councilman Pardon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
I did have one comment on that, though.
And I have a comment, too.
On, on D, I just wanted to make sure that the people that wanted to get in on the, the new appointments were included on that? Or do we have to make a separate motion to include the new appointments?
You, you've approved all the slate that was attached. So everyone who's applied, where there was an opening, they would be filled.
So the two new people are in there? Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Arlene, I'm not sure if it's just me, because I don't have my piece in, but the audio, there's something going on with the audio that does. Is it going away? But they can, can you guys hear normally out there? Okay. Okay, that's kind of what I was getting to, but are, are they hearing it?
Turn your, turn your thing down a little bit, Jesse.
No, I don't even have it on.
Turned on?
Yes, I just want to make sure people online can hear. Because if they hear what I hear, they're not catching any of this, so I just.
Well, the speakers are directed towards them, not towards you. That's part of it.
So we're good?
So, so the online is direct from our microphones to online? But in this, in the gymnasium, I realize we have an echo that might be, that might be a little bit more challenging to hear.
Are we okay now?
I'm cool.
So I just wanted to, though, point out that Matt Feeny, Assistant City Manager, has, came to us and said, "I'm going with the highest bidder because this is what I need." And this time he comes in, he goes, "I'm going with the lowest bidder because they cover what I need." So thank you, Matt, for watching out for our dollars. Appreciate it.
Okay, can we move on to number 10? Discussion of the bamboo parcel. Deputy Mayor Gibson, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this forward. I've had a few people come to me and ask, you know, what's the next step? We didn't accept the bid that was out there before, or the proposal. And there are people interested in it. The real estate market is very hot right now. You know, luckily, we have a governor that hasn't shut everything down. Everybody that are in the shutdown states are moving down here now. So we need to strike while the iron's hot, and we need to get this back on the market and get a great project for there.
Okay, Jesse?
Yes, sir. I agree with Councilman Gibson, and I really think that, you know, I hear the public's comments about wanting to workshop it, and I tend to agree. And the reason I agree is because, you know, the, the folks who tried to develop and we sent them home, part of that was because of the things they brought back to us. I wasn't fundamentally opposed to the things they brought back to us. I was opposed to the manner in which we got there. So I would like to propose, on February 1st, we would do our first workshop. April 1st, we would do our second. And then the bid would go out July 1st and end December 1st. That's a, that gives ample opportunity to have multiple bites of the apple. That gives us multiple opportunities to see economically where this is going to go. And then the great thing is, you know, with an RFP, just like the last folks who came, if we don't like it, we don't have to do it. But we've, we've been waiting on this for 20 years. We've worked shop this to death, and we actually tried to do it. Really, one of the things I'd like to nail out during that process that I'm proposing, like I said, would start February 1st, is whether we use CBRE or not. And I'm not saying they were great, or I'm not saying they weren't, but we didn't have a number of, I mean, we all know Magnus is, we could have probably gotten that one without them. Now, with that being said, it was during COVID, and they did get it to a lot of people. So I'm not saying it goes away, but I'm saying it's, these are the things that I'd like to hash out over two public workshops so everybody gets ample opportunity to get their thoughts in. And then we put together something that the city also finds palatable, and we get moving. Because this way, it's not stalled, but it's nothing immediate, and we don't have to take anything, but we get the opportunity for maybe what will be the crown jewel, and really the, the last unconquered frontier of Bonita. So I think it's very important that we keep moving and don't stall on this, so. Those are my thoughts.
Thank, thank you, Jesse.
May I speak?
Yes.
I have a little bit of different take on this because I did spend some time with an experienced developer who has developed things not only in Bonita Springs, but in other parts of the country. And I explored some of the issues that came up and, which led to our rejection of the, of the proposal that was given to us. And he felt that there was an issue about the timing related to the problems we're having with COVID. But he also related the fact that because it's a small parcel, that it won't have as much attraction as other parcels. He also said that, he agreed that we need to have a clear vision. And one of the reasons why I was not supportive of that project is because I thought we had kind of a pretty good vision of what we wanted down there, and it did not reflect our vision, especially the access to the water. So I do think we need another look at this, and it's not just the vision. And the other thing he said was, and I don't know if, this is one developer, but I respect him, and he has a lot of experience doing this. We have to decide whether we want to put it out for no cost, which is what our, you know, that they, they don't have to buy the property, but they just have to develop it along the lines that we want. So I think we have a lot of work to do, and I know I'm not sure 100% we can do it in the timeframe that you proposed. And I don't, I know there seems to be an urgency to get development down on Old 41, but I don't, I think we should go through with the Magnus property, see how that hap, that, no, that'll, that'll get some things moving. Hopefully, the Terry Street Assemblage will, there'll be some activity there. There's supposed to be some activity down the other end of Old 41. So it's not exactly a dead place. So I'm willing to wait. I think in the long run, we'll have a better project, and we might even get a better return. And again, as far as the actual dollars that come into, to Bonita Springs, even a $5 million project, unless they paid $5 million for the land, on a, on a revenue basis, that's only $800 per million. So that's five, that's, that's really not very significant to the city. So it's not like we're there to get the revenues. We're get, we're there, we're interested in developing this property because of what it can bring to the city in regard to activity and use of a, a resource, which I think is the empirical, Imperial River. So I, I would propose a delay, but I do think we should have a workshop, but we have a lot of other things to think about, too. We don't need a workshop to decide whether we want to get paid for it, or whether we want to have some kind of tax incentive. Those things are, are policies that we can talk about without a, without a workshop. That's really what the City Council should be doing.
Mayor, my, my suggestion, just because we're, the layout we have here is we're a little more spread out. It's harder for everyone to see. In order to get attention, I would ask that everyone please do as Councilwoman Karamba does, and just identify yourself that you want to speak. Because otherwise, I don't see how, I can barely see you all here. I don't, I doubt the mayor can see who wants to be recognized for speaking. So I would just, you know, when one speaker stops, I would like to speak next.
Okay, Fred.
Okay. I, I agree with everybody that's spoken so far. Number one, I did, like Amy, I talked to a developer who was big in this kind of stuff. He said six months would be the earliest. That fits Jesse's proposal. He also said that if we want mixed use, where we have commercial on the bottom and residential on the top, that takes very specific type of developers. The run-of-the-mill, good developers, they're not used to that. They even had trouble developing Mercado because of putting the residences above. They had to bring in a consultant. It could be that we wanted to have the commercial and then have a separate buildings with the residential, which is the same thing. Secondly, the real estate market is booming, but what's booming is the residential. Commercial is not booming at this point. It probably will start to boom in about six months or so. So again, that fits Jesse's thing. I think on a workshop, the biggest thing that we could come up with, with public input, would be the kind of businesses we don't want in this development. As far as what you're going to get, the marketplace is going to determine that. Doing Amy's idea of giving the property away makes it easier for us to get them to do more of what we want, I will say that. I think we ought to explore all those things.
Okay, anybody else? I have some comments on. The Terry Street Assemblage has a year left that they have to do something, or they lose their development order. The use of the bamboo property, I believe, depends a lot on the Terry Street Assemblage. So for me personally, I'd like to see at least the southern part of bamboo property taken by, owned by the city. It is already, and turned into a park, a parking lot with river access. The other side of the river, bigger parcel, I believe depends on what happens to the Terry Street Assemblage with Big Tony Manzello, whether he's sick, or whether he's going to sell the whole thing out. We're sort of in limbo. It doesn't cost us anything.
They can't hear you.
Sorry. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. So it depends on, in my opinion, I'd like to see more park and less, less development down there. I'd like to see four corners. We, we currently have four corners of the river there, which I'd like to keep in front. The southern part of bamboo as a future park and parking lot. And sell the other portion, sell the other portion to whoever wants to develop it. Also, there's a possibility that Big Tony Manzello might want to sell his in combination with the bamboo, and we have a bigger project. There's a lot of opportunity there, and I think we bought that in 2002 or four. I don't see any big hurry. Maybe we can bring back a, a green sheet next meeting and have further discussion and talk about a workshop at that time. Would that be all right?
So, so yes, I would like to work with staff on a green sheet that would kind of outline timetables for what a workshop might look like. And then, it's non-committal. We're just starting that process. And I don't want to speak for Deputy Gibson. I don't know if that's good enough for you, or if you wanted to vote right now. I don't know.
I'm fine with voting right now. I was, I was happy with your timetable. I thought it was a little long as far as, you know, deciding in December. I was shooting for something a little quicker than that.
I mean, I would like it very soon. I was, I always try to take into account getting as much support from our colleagues as possible. I felt if I made a longer timetable.
Nope. It's dead.
They cut you.
Okay, so I agree with you, Mike. I would like a more expedited timetable, but when I was putting this together today, I was trying to take into account that, you know, I know our colleagues would definitely maybe not be as chomping at the bit about this project as you and I were, because we both put in a green sheet on it. And I felt if I put two workshops and spread it out over six months, and there's really no risk within RFP, that I could probably get people on board with that. And I felt if I tried to push it sooner, I might have a harder time. So I don't know if I'm right. I'm willing to vote on it right now, and if it doesn't work, then we can try the workshop version.
Well, what I'd like to see is bring it up to the next work, the next meeting with a green sheet, with some, some information from the staff as far as what all these possibilities are. And it's not that long away, it's not that far away, and we can set up a timetable at that time. Does that be all right with everybody?
I'm sure that's what Mike wants, and, and I'm inclined to vote if he is.
Is the property for sale right now? If I wanted to buy it, could I buy it today?
Someone could submit, I mean, in theory, someone could submit to the city an unsolicited purchase offer. That can always occur at some time.
Why, why is it not on the market? Wasn't it on the market?
Well, we did, we did a surplus lands, a request for proposals. Those proposals were received. We don't currently have it out again, and we don't have it listed with anyone either. But, you know, we have, I, I will speak for myself. I have received public records requests from developers, large developers in the area. I, I do know that there is more interest. Those developers are aware that they can submit now. I think, I think there is some degree from the entire development community to not waste their time and go through the process until they know a little bit more of what the council's looking for.
So that's why a timetable really makes sense. I don't, I don't want to do a discussion, I don't want to do a green sheet to have a discussion about a timetable. A timetable is kind of a negotiation because we're not voting on it tonight anyway. So I'd just like to at least signal we're open to talking about developing our downtown.
Perhaps a recommendation might be, I, I do see the majority of the council is, is interested in discussing lots of options. Maybe we should just look to setting an initial workshop.
Yes.
And then at some point in the future, and then collectively, you can whittle down the options that you'd like to consider.
Mike, are you okay with that?
Yeah, we just want to vote on having that first workshop tonight. That would be fine.
I said February 1st. If you want to do it Jan, I, I just figured February gave them, you know, January to get situated with life. And then, you know, if you want to do it in January 15th or something, that's fine. I, I think the first is a Monday, so it was just kind of starting off the month and the week that way, but.
Whatever would work best for staff, either late January or the, right in the beginning of February.
Perhaps we could, I don't know if we could do two things together, but I know that Arlene, the city manager, has a proposal to do a workshop for other kinds of processes. Maybe we could incorporate them together. We could talk about it again later on in the agenda. The one problem I have is, I think it's obvious, Mayor Steinmeier has a different view of what he thought he would, his vision of what he would like in there. I might have a certain, a different view. I don't think we have on the council a cohesive vision of what we want there. So even if we got a proposal, how would we know whether we wanted it or not?
Well, that, that's why we do RFP. But I mean, my issue is that we've spent over 25 million tax dollars to get it to where it's at now, and it looks so beautiful. But it's never going to be a destination. It's never, this, this property is supposed to activate our downtown and make it a vibrant downtown and a place. That's, that's something we've lacked as a city for a very long time. This is the linchpin to that happening well altogether, and it can't happen without that. And I'm not asking that we vote that, yes, we can develop it today. I'm just saying, let us have the talk, because it's been 20 years, and the people want it. And there's nothing wrong with having just a talk and a workshop.
No, I agree about the workshop. What I'm saying is that we have to talk more. You're asking if we want a development. I am saying, what are we going to develop? I need to know what we're going to develop before I can answer that question.
Well, we won't know what we're going to develop until we get RFPs, and we can't get RFPs until we have the workshops.
We agree, then.
Okay, can, can we move along? We don't need a vote on it.
February 1st? So February 1st?
Are we?
February 1st? Is that the?
No, that's a Monday. I'm not available Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, so Wednesday, okay, so what is that, the 3rd then, probably? Is that a Wednesday?
Wednesday is the 3rd, and Wednesday is the 3rd, and that's typically your city council meeting in that evening. We could, we could, if you like, depending on what the agenda holds, we could devote it to a workshop, if you like, instead. With mi, with minor items that are, are business items we have to keep up with.
Mike, I'm good with that.
That sounds good.
All right, yep, I can go with that.
Go with the 3rd?
That works.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Mayor, excuse me, I'm sorry. If we could just take a brief moment recess, I think that staff would rearrange the speakers for the audience so it might, because of feedback, they can't move it during, while we're, while we're meeting. And that might make it a little bit easier for folks to hear.
Yes, everybody agree to recess?
Okay.
It's like kindergarten, off recess.
Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, we are.
Number 11?
Next item is a first reading.
Next item is a first reading and public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending the Benita Springs Code, Chapter 10, Article 2, Building Codes and Standards, Section 10-20, to update wind speed lines in a windborne debris region that coincides with Figure 1606 of the Florida Building Code, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, scrivener's error, and providing for an effective date.
Motion moved second.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
One moment, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have, this one, this one actually does require a public hearing.
Yes, we need a public hearing on this. From my understanding, that the building codes are adjusted every year, that we do this every year because they keep improving our building codes. Anybody from the public care to speak? Here we go.
This is Mr. Higginson, this is our building official.
Good evening, I'm Peter Higginson, building official. The codes actually change every three years and they're...
Thank you, yeah.
They're planning to change effective December 31st, so we're going from the 6th to the 7th edition, and in that new edition, the wind zones maps of the building code have altered the risk categories a little bit, and this is just to reflect those changes as regards the type of construction that we require for Risk Category 1, 2, 3, and 4. And this, the only one that's really splits the city in half is the Risk Category 3, and that's where the change was primarily made. And this has to do with our rating with the ISO and the FEMA and those kinds of things.
So that would affect midtown Benita?
Your microphone on?
Not really. I think that line was, is more east of downtown.
Good, okay.
Yes, the, the debris only goes so high and we're trying to keep them...
Well, the wind zones run from 130 to 180 miles an hour, and the structures are to be built to those wind loads, and that's all broken down in the way the shell of the building and the windows and doors and things like that withstand those high winds.
Will this affect any new construction? All new construction?
All new construction, yes. Commercial and residential.
Okay, thank you. Call for a vote?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay. Moving along here.
Mr. Mayor, I have no items.
Okay. Number 12, attorney's report?
None.
None? Number 13, city managers' items?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. If you would inform me, I'm going to address item A and B together, and Carol Green and Ashley are both here today with capital strategies to assist. Myself and Assistant City Manager Matt Feeney, along with Councilmember Carr and Carol, were able to attend the legislative delegation meeting this morning. Carol was able to speak on our behalf and thanked the legislatures on behalf of our mayor and council this morning and present our legislative items. One of the things we'd like to address with you this evening is, in the previous council meeting, we had discussed making our financial ask regarding the Quinn Down Imperial Street area and looking at a home buyout program slash home elevation program. We would like to get council's recommendation and final decision on the actual funding amount. We'd like to ask for that. With understanding the state conditions as they are now, I think your staff is looking at, we look at somewhat of, somewhat of a pilot program that maybe we could afford to do a couple of houses elevated or look at one, one house and then see how that goes. Plus, at the same time, we will be completing some of the studies that we're working on as far as the infrastructure needed, and we might identify specific areas where unfortunately the CDBG funding won't be able to be utilized because possibly the folks don't meet the financial requirements, but those properties might become important in an actual infrastructure project. So that would give us a little bit more time for next fiscal year to identify more for home buyout or elevation. I think staff's recommendation would be around the $300,000 mark for an ask, but we'd like council's direction on that. And secondly, I'll, I'll take on item B at the same time, so Carol can address both, is, as you are aware, we've provided information regarding the Big Cypress Basin as a legislative priority of Lee County. I understand it's also a legislative priority of the Village of Astero. We would like direction from council as to whether you'd like to amend our language to include that, and I think staff's recommendation would be to look at the language that we provided you from Lee County as well. But Carol's here to also give an update on this morning and, and we'll work together and get your feedback so we can properly record that back to the legislative, legislature representatives.
Thank you, Arlene. Carol?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad Ashley and I are here this evening because of the fact that we believe very strongly that, that it is part of our responsibility for you to be able to give you some of our advice as far as what we're doing going forward. I would preempt that by saying in regards to item A, that I personally have spoken with Representative Botana in regards to what we might be looking at. I believe that staff, I believe, Arlene, you have also spoken with him. And then I did have a follow-up conversation with him, with him just wanting to get some numbers together. I did indicate to him that we'd be discussing it this evening. I also, as, as per the councilman's suggestion, invited him to come this evening too, but I know they've had a very long day today because the delegation meeting went till after 5:00. So, he is very open to that and wants to, and will look forward to having an opportunity to come and, and address the council and speak with you. But he is aware of the issue, he is aware of the fact that we are thinking about this. We're also very much aware of Representative Roach, and he's been very outspoken in the fact that he believes strongly that, that we shouldn't be going forward with a lot of budget requests this year, and we certainly can appreciate the, and have sympathy too, actually, to our legislators for what they're faced with as they go forward to Tallahassee. We do sympathize with that, however, I do believe very strongly that we do not do our citizens that we represent in Benita Springs well if we do not advocate for them in regards to some of the issues that we find that are really harmful to them. And because of that, I believe that, obviously, Representative Botana did not give me a yes or no. He would certainly not be in a position to do that without knowing exactly what we are looking at. So what we're here for tonight is to be able to know what you, as a council and the mayor, would like to do with us going forward. I believe very strongly, and I believe Ashley would concur with me, that when you're looking at a number like the 300,000 for something as important as being able to get some of your citizens out of harms way is something that we could support in going forward, again, with, with the input from Representative Botana as our sponsor in the House. So, that being said, we're here for that dialogue in that regard. I can go on into the other, should we handle them separately maybe? Be easier?
Is that, that number seems low for moving houses and buying houses, is that, is there a match on that? Do we have to match that?
Correct, Mayor, we would have, if we were to be receiving the funding, I think the legislature has indicated in the past, close to a 50% match is what they would be looking at, so it could be a total dollar of around 600,000.
And we do, and my understanding too, when I've spoken to Arlene and Matt about this, is the fact that we would do it almost as a blend. Some of those houses might be buyout, some of those houses might be ones that we would be able to actually change the elevation or help them in another way.
And the value of those houses are pre-IRMA?
So Mayor, sir, the program that the city has received funding for with the federal government requires that we purchase it at a value of pre-IRMA. But I think that the legislative dollars may not be that restrictive. That would be something we would talk with, with our legislative about, but there are several restrictions on the, on the federal money we receive. One, that it is a CDBG program, meaning that folks who benefit from it have to be of low to moderate income through the process, and additionally, they could only be offered the value of the property pre-IRMA prices.
Okay. What do we need from, from us there, Carol?
Well, may, I'm sorry, may we, may we, may we speak?
Yes, ma'am.
May we speak? Do you want to speak? Anyway, I, I am in favor of doing the demonstration project that Arlene has identified, and I think with the amount of funds that she is suggesting, it would probably be enough to show what we're trying to accomplish down in that area that was hit so, so badly. And it will give us a chance to, in the subsequent years, to ask for more if we need, that we, if we find that we need it to really do, to, to fix the problem as, as best we can. But, but I'd agree that the legislature is going to be under so much pressure that it would be better for us not to be too greedy at this point, and since we are still working on the buyout program from the federal grants, I think it'll, it'll do what we have to do and still get our toe in the water for what we might plan to do in the future. So I think that's a great solution that the staff has given to us, so I'd be in favor of that.
I support that as well.
Yeah, I agree with Amy also. The situation we're in right now, if we ask for too much, like you said, we're going to look greedy, you know, and then it may look bad for us for future years, and chances are, they're not going to be dishing out very much money this year anyway, so.
I, I agree.
And you did receive a nice, yeah, fully funded last year.
We did good last year, so.
But, but the bottom line is that, is that we do have to ask.
Yeah.
If we, if we, I mean, there will be money, and for projects like this that really do impact your low-income housing and, and really, you do have people that are in harms way, it is something that we can advocate for without, without blinking.
Yeah.
I know you know what I mean, you know?
Right.
That area does have some low-income people.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I had the benefit of talking to two elected officials from two other cities today, and their ask was primarily septic tank conversion, but Ford Myers is asking a lot of money, and Sanibel Island is asking a pretty good amount of money. They also said that they had talked to three other legislators, and they all said the only two kind of projects that would receive money would be ones that have to do with water, which the elevating the buildings would do, and also septic tank conversion, because that has a lot to do with getting the nutrient level reduced in the water. I, I would suggest we, on the septic tank, use some of the money that we have in the state, citywide stormwater management, which we can do legally, because that's water quality, and that would more, we could put up a pretty good match and then go to BSU and ask them to maybe pony up some money to, to augment it, because they're the ones that are going to be doing the work as they get the septic tanks converted over to the sanitary sewer that they run.
Is that all septic?
They've already got the drawings done for 150 tank conversion in the wetland of the DRGR, right by the river.
But we're not, that's not the place where we're lifting the houses, they're on...
No.
They're on, okay, thank you.
That's a great idea, Fred.
That is good, that's good, Fred, I like that too.
I, I agree that they might be short of funds, sales tax funds with this COVID and everything else. We never really know how much money the state's going to be able to take in this year. We're open, but the rest of the country isn't. I don't know, it's hard. They got us up in the air, this, this disease is really shaking us up. But if we can get some, why don't we go for it? Do you need a vote on that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we'd be asking for a vote.
I move to give direction to our lobbyists to follow the recommendations coming out of the staff for the, the, the project.
Second.
The demonstration project.
I'll, I'll second.
That's good for us if it's good with you, with the staff, yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor, what I will say is that we do, as item B on that as well, it does have the conversion of septic to sewer system, and so we'll continue to monitor that. As programs become available, we'll come back to council if there needs to be an adjustment or a match brought forward to you. We'll continue to monitor that. Also, we'll be looking to advocate that those, as previous years, that any kind of programs could be through, through the Department of Health or Department of Environmental Protection that could provide funding to communities, local communities, we'll advocate for that as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we, we always look for, we always look for opportunities when it comes to that particular issue as we go forward, because it is a very important one to our entire state.
And then, and then Mayor, we'd like to move on to B, because we would like a vote to see if, if the council is interested in amending the legislative priorities to address the Big Cypress Basin, and if so, what language you would, you wish to pursue there. Your staff recommendation is to, to use language similar to Lee County's.
I make a motion, we do that?
Second.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. We, we have just a follow-up to that, if we might.
I'm working on the report for December. There haven't been that many bills filed, but I will send it out on Friday and then another one. Usually we do them weekly, but we didn't have committee weeks this month because of COVID, but I'll go ahead and send out what I've been following and tagging, and I'll send that out to everybody on Friday, and then it'll be weekly in January, just so you know where we're at with bills.
And I would, I would only add with the Big Cypress that, representative, sorry, Senator Rodriguez, Senator Rodriguez has already made the, the formal announcement at the chamber luncheon this week that he is prepared to file the bill in that regard and changing the boundaries. He indicated at that time that that probably will not happen until around February because of the fact that they're still working on the data that's coming in, but just so you know, there is, there's obviously legs to that through our Senator, through Senator Rodriguez, and also, he would indicated that Representative Botana would also be doing that, although I haven't heard that definitively from the representative, I did hear it from the Senator.
Okay, and that cuts our taxes a little bit, is that true?
About half a million.
I, I have, I have no way of being able to predict that one, sir.
It does.
Yeah, it's about a half million dollars.
About, well, you, actually, what'll happen, it reduces the taxes paid in to, by our residents to the Lake Okeechobee and the Everglades Restoration reduces that amount by 16%. So if you pay $100, you're going to have 16%, say, pay $200 towards that. Here, here's a little thing I had Ann put together, so I'll pass it on.
Arlene, you agree with that?
We're all, if we're all good with that, then we'll wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas.
Yes.
And we'll look forward to continuing our good work. At this point, it's probably going to be in 2021, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for your efforts.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank you. Stay up, stay well.
So Mayor, the, the information that Councilman Forbes, that, that is the current rate, so, from, I'm sorry, from 2019. If you, if you're utilizing the same taxing rate from 2019, that would be the differential. That would need to be decided by the legislature through a, through a bill, how the taxing would be processed, and we, we did get a little bit of insight from that on, by Chairman Goss of the Water Management District said that would be something that would have to be defined within a legislative bill.
Okay, so, thank you. What do we got next here, Arlene?
So sir, we, we would then move on to item C, under City Managers Items, and this is to authorize a change order for Wright Construction to mitigate air quality issues discovered during the city hall renovations. Unfortunately, as we continued with the renovation of the air conditioning system, we did unfortunately uncover that there was mold issues which had to be remediated. Additionally, we found that there was failure of the windows for proper draining. The windows are not energy efficient code, so unfortunately, we're at a situation where we do need to replace all of the windows to have the proper drainage and also meet proper efficiency codes. We do have representatives from Wright Construction and our consultants here, should you have any questions on the change order, and, and it is... you have any questions on the change order. And it is a little bit over $200,000, and the $223,032.79.
Yes, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, I actually went over and took a look at City Hall, and I, I took some pictures of the mold in the windows, and I mean, I don't like change orders better than anyone, but we, unfortunately, where we're at, A, it doesn't surprise me based on the age, but B, we, we don't really have an option, unfortunately. I don't think so.
I, I agree, we need to do it right if we're going to do it with Wright.
Motion to approve, second.
Another question, can you tell me if this is going to extend the construction time on City Hall?
Sir, the change order includes a 45-day period extension, but I think our contractors are working to hopefully deliver prior to that. But because of ordering of the windows and equipment, we did, wanted to make sure they could meet the guaranteed date. So this change order does include a 45-day extension. We're hopeful that we would be sooner than that, but we, we have to allow for equipment to arrive.
Very good, thank you. Can I have a roll call?
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Mayor and Council, the next item I have is discussion. We'd like some, some direction from you all regarding the possibility of installation of air purification equipment at some of our city facilities. What we have realized from looking at different funding opportunities through the CARES Act funds is many jurisdictions are using the funds to provide air, air quality systems. I did ask for a breakdown between each of the facilities so we could look at possibilities. In working with Lee County for the funding we're going to be receiving, the equipment would have to be in hand prior to December 30th for this funding cycle. Lee County is very confident that we'll receive a second round of funding, and I am aware that this type of equipment is, is fundable under, under that form. We may be able to look at a phased project here or, or look at some opportunities. One thing I think staff would look at is, since we are in the middle of renovations of City Hall, you may want to look at that system first and then come back maybe to the Recreation System Assist Center. The Lyles Hotel offers individual pieces, and we, we've got representatives here that can give you more information on it. They wouldn't be able to actually direct install into the air conditioning system. So we wanted the opportunity to provide this information to you. We're hopeful that funding would be available next year, that would be reimbursable to us. That's not a guarantee, though, but we didn't want the opportunity to pass without bringing this before you, especially since the air conditioning system is being renovated now at City Hall.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I'd just make a comment that I, I take, I take that what you're talking about is will, this would be contingent upon getting the CARES Act money?
Well, well, we're hopeful we could get that. We, we would like to know if, if you want to pursue it, we wouldn't, at this point, we wouldn't be able to turn it in for this round of funding, funding. But if we pursued now, there's no guarantee that second round of funding has come. But if it does, we would apply for it.
Okay.
Would we do it in the stages? Like, so the City Hall, since we're doing that air, AC unit, so since we're doing the AC unit at City Hall, we would do that first and then see where our funding is for the rec center and so forth? Like, we'd do it in stages?
That's absolutely an, an option. I think we'd like to ask you how, if you'd like to move forward. If you'd like us just to move forward with City Hall, we can do that.
I would like to just go with the City Hall.
Mayor, may I speak? I, I agree with you. I think we should definitely go ahead with the City Hall. And I think if you read the fine print here, they're not going to even get the equipment for 12 to 14 weeks anyway. But since we already have putting in a new HVAC system there that makes sense, and also the fact that it's centralized, I have some questions about some of the other proposals where you have to do individual units, especially in the Lyles Hotel, and perhaps even in, in the rec center, that, and I think I would like to know more information about before we go forward with those other things. I'm not against them, no matter who pays for them, but I definitely think we, whether we get reimbursed or not, we should go ahead with the City Hall so that we could put, at least provide for it as they're finishing other construction, which I guess is supposed to be like February or something, or March. So there's time for them to put it in there.
Correct. And I think that would be, along with staff's recommendation, is because we, we do need a further analysis of the, the entire air conditioning system for this recreation center and the old recreation center. There is a possibility that upgrades need to be taken there as well.
Mr. Mayor?
As we have a motion on the table, and the motion is just to do City Hall?
Yes.
It's been seconded. Can we vote on that?
If I can, I just had one more question about the Lyles units.
Yes.
The, the smaller units in the Lyles, there's not a faster way of getting those since they're not installed directly in the system, they're just put in?
Could, Scott, could you come forward, or Jesse, could you come forward?
I, I was just thinking, if they were, you know, quicker installed, we could get them faster, we might be able to get under the, the CARES funding that we're, we're getting for the end of the year.
Todd Griffith with Matern Engineering. We were asked to find solutions for the air purification systems. We recommended the Genesis Air System because of its capabilities in combating viral pathogens in the airstream. Jesse Colston is here with me tonight. He's the sales representative for that piece of equipment, and he can speak to the availability and the lead time for that, that equipment for the Lyles Hotel specifically.
As far as the lead time, as you could probably imagine, with the pandemic going on, these types of systems are just in high demand. It's possibility that some time could be shaved off, but getting something before the end of this year would just not be a possibility. Yeah. In other words, they're, they're not sitting on a shelf in stock.
Question? Does this system that you're selling, is that independent of the existing system? Separate? Or is it an, installed integrally into the system?
Into the existing air conditioning system?
How, if those systems are very old, we'll be replacing them anyway?
Yeah, sure.
So we looked at three buildings, the City Hall, the Lyles Hotel, and the rec center. And we looked at the best application for the product in each, each instance. And in the case of the City Hall, it was best to implement the technology in the new air handling units that are being installed in that facility. In the case of Lyles Hotel, it was due to space constraints. It was, the best application was for the standalone individual units in each, each room. So that was what was priced and proposed for the Lyles Hotel. And then in the rec center, it was a little bit of a combination. We were proposing putting some equipment up in the ductwork, up on the mechanical mezzanine in this building, and then standalone units over in the, the other rec, small rec center building. So it was a combination of, of applications depending on how it fit best in each building.
In the Lyles Hotel, the standalone needs 30 amps. I don't think those, that we, that the wall plugs are going to carry 30 amps of?
I, I don't recall. I don't, I don't think that's correct. I don't think each unit takes 30 amps. It's, each unit takes two to three amps. So we were going to be able to add it to an existing circuit. It may have been a total of 30 amps if, if you add all of the units up, but each unit is not 30 amps.
What, it reads 14 units at, at the Lyles Hotel?
I think that's seven, seven and seven. Yeah. So it's 14 if you take two to three amps each.
It takes a lot of, a lot of space, but anyway.
Then that, that's where the 30 amps came from. It was a total load of 30 amps.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're going to vote on the City Hall. Call for a vote?
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next item I have is, your staff received a request from Dr. Michael Severisi to provide a letter of support for a grant.
You're skipping a public hearing.
Building permit costs?
I, I would like John Dahmer to come forward. Your, your next item, it, it is a public hearing, because we would be discussing the reduction of fees. Anytime we're discussing fees, so, John, if you could move forward with your item.
And I, I would like John to jump on one foot. There you go.
Good evening.
Good.
No hazing, no hazing.
The purpose of this item is to comply with state statute. Last legislative session, I believe it was about a year ago, there was a, a clarification made in terms of building fees, and that clarification stated that the building permit fee account can only have enough money in there to fund the department for one year. And right now, we have more than that. So what we are proposing to you right now is a reduction in those fees so that we can draw down that account, consistent with how we're able to spend money and charge money with that same state statute, so that we can become compliant. Now, this is based upon previous activity and our best guess on how to ease this fund down. What I really don't want to see is for anything to go up or down too quickly, because that makes it very difficult for us to control. So in this particular case, if we start to see a faster drawdown than we had expected or anticipated, I will be happy to come back and provide you an update so that we can modify how we're charging these fees to make sure we have that smooth drawdown on that fund. Our goal is to be compliant with state statute. However, we want to do this in an orderly manner, because we are still talking about the, the mechanism that funds the building department. So I don't know if there's any questions. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
What would cause an extra, an, an, an extra drawdown? More, more applications? Or what would cause it to?
No, sir, actually, what would happen is if there was a lack of application. So if something stopped, we, we talked earlier about the real estate market being relatively hot right now. If something were to change and that market were to turn very cold, permits were to drop, and new construction were to, were to be reduced, we'd be in a situation where the revenue would not be coming in regardless of what the fee was. So if we start seeing a situation where that fee is coming, or those, those revenues are going down very quickly, I'll simply bring this back to you, and we can have another discussion on what we would like to do and, and make sure everybody's comfortable going forward.
And this is a state mandated?
Yes, sir.
And so the state's saying, I'm sorry?
No, no, please go ahead.
So the state's saying that we have too much money and we have, we can't move it to someplace else that we need to spend it? Sorry. So the state is saying we have too much money and we have to stop charging?
Overcharging.
Building permit fees are a regulated revenue, and they, the state has defined how you can charge them, what you can do with this money. And in this particular case, they put a cap on the amount of revenue that can be in, or the, the amount that can be in the account for building permit fees. And so this reduction is an attempt to draw down that account balance so that we are consistent with state statutes. So yes, they did tell us how much money we can have in our account.
And we can't put it toward road improvements or getting that extra corner piece of property?
No, ma'am, I, I could feel the building official over my shoulder. He, he's ready to tell all of you that building permit fees can only be charged to enforce the building code. So if it goes to directly enforcing the building code, the monies can be spent.
So we can give Pete a huge raise to take care of this.
So can we hire another, like, person to, to do more inspections? Our building code folks need help.
They would probably all want raises, but that's not what we're here for tonight, sir.
Mayor, you have two council members' questions?
Jesse?
Um, I just wanted to say, John, this was a very interesting situation, because I think the cap was kind of unforeseen from our side, but I think this is innovative. I think it's timely, and I think it's potentially business-friendly. So I mean, lemon to lemonade, you know, I'd, I'd love it if we could get all the money. We can't, we got to be in statute, but this is a pretty good way to make it work. So, you know, I don't know if you did it all yourself, or it was all staff idea, or what, that's great, though. So I, I think it's a good idea.
I just take the credit, they all did the work.
No, I approve of your suggestion. I just have a question. Could we, at some point, use the fund to build a, a building, you know, building, a, a department, like, building?
A, a building for the building department?
Yeah, building for the building.
You can.
So I mean, could you sort of wherehouse it if you had a plan to do that in the future?
Right now, the, this is going to get into a much longer discussion, because that, that.
No, I was just curious, because I think that would be, you're, you're not in the City Hall.
Correct.
You're in a separate building.
Correct.
So if we were, if we needed that for something else and wanted to kick you out, and we would put you somewhere else, we would build you a building or renovate a building or something like that, would that be an appropriate use of the funds?
Councilwoman Caramba, there's one other, there's one other problem with that, is let's say we built a building for community development. We could not house non-community development staff in that building. And if at some point, we decided that we didn't want, community, community development needed a new home, we would then have restrictions on what we could do with that building as well.
Oh, okay.
Because like impact fees, all the, all the building fees are supposed to be tied to a direct correlation with the services provided. The problem, of course, is that building permits go up and down. And what we saw in 2009 with, with the big collapse is that some governments had large stockpiles reserves, which the legislature has looked at as saying, well, you were charging too much. That's why you were able to have these, these stockpiles. And so they're asking us to push it down. But you also saw a situation where a lot of, a lot of governments ended up having to cut staff because they had years of no building permits. And then when the new, when the economy turned back around, they had no staff to process the applications, and it became a backlog for development. So sort of where this, this lies is a, is a midpoint, where they take your past budgets and try to extrapolate. And we did look at what other things we could add and prove within the timeframe, but we had a, we had a deadline of sort of this year to start reducing that fund.
Okay, well, thanks for the information. I just was curious.
Okay, I think.
Motion to approve? Second.
Comment? The, Lee County has had that problem where they had ups and downs, and they laid people off, and they came back. And I understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, just to add to that same point, Mayor, the City of Fort Myers has been, has reduced their fees. It started out at 50%, and they dropped it to 75%, and they extended that for another year because their surplus was so high that they weren't even really putting a dent in it with the reduction in the fees. Lee County just started last month reducing their fees 25% for the same reason. And this proposal is to, to get our surplus down to where it is relative to the ordinance, the statute that states that the reasonable fees for producing permits and providing the services of a billing department should basically be equal and match out. And the surplus is an indication that the fees were too high and that, you know, the building industry and other groups kind of frowned upon that surplus being there, because they feel that's kind of their money. And they, they put it in there, and they have no way of getting it back unless we reduce the fees.
Now, that's a.
Just one more.
Yes.
It's Michael, is it? I'm sorry, it's your name again, Michael?
Peter.
Peter, Peter. So what about the folks who paid? Do they have recourse to get a proportion of their money back?
Well, the, the statute actually says that you can do three different things. Basically, one would be to reduce the fees, to lower the, the surplus. The second would be to increase what you pay the billing department, to take a chunk out that way. And the other option is to give the money back, but I think that would be the more work-intensive method, because you'd have to go back and cut checks to everybody that's paid permit fees for the last 10 years.
Right. And then ask them to hold the checks.
Yeah. So I think, you know, the easiest way out is to, not that you wouldn't, I wouldn't mind it being the other one, where you give us more money, but the other thing would be to, the best procedure would be to lower the fees, and I think that's the way we should go.
This may stimulate a little construction, maybe? It's lower the cost of construction, so it should, it may stimulate a little more construction?
Well, it certainly could. I mean, we've been, the construction has been very hot for quite a few years now, and it's, we don't know what's going to happen next year. We don't have a crystal ball, but. it's, we don't know what's going to happen next year, we don't have a crystal ball, but at the rate we're going, the, even with the COVID, we were still putting more money into the surplus than it was costing to provide the service. So I don't think there's any question that lowering the fees at this point would be the best alternative to get it back to where it is kind of normal and would be in favor by the state and the local building associations and such.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I think we actually might...
I think we already did that.
Yeah, I think I did that, and somebody seconded it already, maybe.
Mayor, because it's a setting fees, it is required to be a public hearing, so if there's any members of the public who wish to speak on this item, seeing none, you can move forward to vote.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now we are on item F, which is a request that your staff received from a Dr. Michael Severisi with FGCU. He did request a letter of support for additional grant funding. Previously, I think a similar proposal was provided, and a letter of support was provided as well. But this is a policy call of the City Council, so that's why we brought it forward for your direction. Also, there was a deadline pointed as well. Typically, we would have circulated this as an email to you to determine if there was a sponsor from the council that wished to move forward, but because of the grant deadline that the timeframe presented to us, we provided it to you as well for direction.
My opinion is I don't want to, I don't want to do this, because I don't believe the sea level is rising, living there 40 years on the ocean. I haven't seen that, and eventually, they're going to come around and ask us for more money, or ask us for money. Thank you.
I agree with the mayor.
And we're also asking for the grant, so I was opposed to writing support for a grant that we're also going for.
That's my issue.
So...
I'm sorry, I need, I'm sorry, I should clarify. That letter that was provided last time, we were applying for the same funds, we consulted with Ellie, and for this different grant that he's applying for, we're not applying for the same funding at this time. But previously, we were. We were both, we were both applying for the same funding previously.
Oh, okay. I just would like to make a policy statement here. I object to having these kinds of things put before the council without giving us the opportunity to thoroughly research them. So this is, we're supposed to get this in by the 18th of December, and it's here today, and there's not enough time to really look at it. In a cursory view of the information that was given to us, it's not clear, even if the project is granted to them, that we would get a direct benefit from that. And I think it illustrates, and if we look at that original letter that was in there, that letter also was brought to us sort of at the last minute without our being able to give it our full consideration. I would like to have the council talk at some time about what we, that we established some procedure for having things brought before the council, and I think we should at least have it discussed in general terms, and perhaps brought a meeting or two later for the vote, so that we could really, we could really look at this and make a decision, and not just rubber-staff, stamp things that come before us. So I think this is an illustration of things that have bothered me in the past, and I would like the council to think about our establishing some procedure so that we can do our business thoroughly.
I agree. I move to defeat this motion.
A second?
Defeat it, he said.
Do we need to vote it down, or just not even take it up?
We don't have to vote on it.
So I think, I think staff has your direction. We will, we will contact Dr. Severisi and explain that at this time, as a policy call, we won't be providing a letter of support.
Okay, thank you, Arlene.
Mayor and Council, the next item I have is approve an addendum to the interlocal agreement with Lee County to receive funding under the CARES Act in the amount of $1,600,000. As you recall, we previously entered an interlocal agreement with Lee County for $800,000, so this is not an additional 1.6 million, this is a total, the grant would be amended to a total of $1,600,000. And what we have been working with and coordinating with, with Lee County, is they are going to make direct payroll to the Lee County Sheriff's Office because of language within the CARES Act that provides for public safety officers. We have a contract with the Lee County Sheriff's Office that's solely for personnel. Our city attorney reviewed the language, as well as our staff attorney, Carley, as well, and we feel that it's consistent to provide the contract that we have with Lee County for possibility of funding. There's no guarantee that we'll get that funding, but we felt we should pursue the opportunity while it was available to us. So Lee County is offering to amend our contract, and we would be providing that. We additionally have a little bit over $90,000 in costs to the city because of COVID, which we understand are eligible expenses. Some of that is, thank you for your patience, is the sound system we have here for remote meetings, telecommunications equipment we have to provide for staff to work remote, sanitizing equipment we did. So we have the $90,000 plus, we'll be looking at approximately nine months of the sheriff's contract, which includes last fiscal year and a portion of this fiscal year through December 30th. We are hopeful there'll be a second phase of that, and as we said before, we would be looking to bring other projects for you. We would look to apply for the reimbursement of the funding of air quality at City Hall, and then see if there's other opportunities for that, for infrastructure as well that meets the requirements. Again, I want to guarantee, there's a, I don't want to guarantee that we'll receive the whole $1,600,000 back in the contract, that the federal government could come back with a percentage. I believe the thoughts were is that because of the situation with COVID, our first responders were totally dedicated in their time to dealing with that, and so that's, that's understand as the allowance within the language. And I'll let the city attorney add anything to that.
Arlene, have we been reimbursed at $90,000?
Not, not yet. That's part of this contract that's due to Lee County by December 30th, and our finance department has already allocated those invoices, receipts, and contracts to deliver to them prior to the deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
What I would add is that there was a few months ago, when the CARES Act started, it takes a little while to kick in, was being doled out to the communities, that there was, there was a finding that actually many counties that got approved for CARE Act's funding, their allocations were going unused, and there was a determination, at least at the state level, through the Department of Emergency Management, that they may be eligible for their first responders. And so several counties have submitted their entire sheriff's budgets, their EMS budgets, and this is, this is a version of that, since we do not have staff ourselves, but we do pay extra money to the sheriff's office for additional services. They provide the only services that we had, other than our code enforcement for frontline services during COVID. So we're hopeful that that interpretation by the state will carry through in the federal funding, and we'll be able to get an allocation.
Thank you, dear.
Mr. Mayor? On here, it says December 30th, 2021. Is that a typo, or?
That would be a typo. It's December 30th, 2021.
Okay, because that's why originally I was thinking, when I saw this, that we could use the money for the previous thing with the air handlers, so.
No, that isn't, that's a typo. And Mayor and Council, if you would allow me, I would like to graciously thank the Lee County staff, Pete Witten, Glenn Sawyer, and Dave Harner, who worked very diligently with us to come up with solutions for our funding, and very quickly processed an addendum so we could place it on this agenda. And Roger and his team have been very, very helpful through this process with us.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye. Mayor and Council, the next item I have is discussion of a proposed City Council strategic planning workshop and direction of staff. Previously, the council had discussed having a strategic, or having a workshop to discuss communications amongst yourselves, as well as planning for our future. We do typically have a strategic planning session approximately every two years to look at the strategic priorities determined, if your staff's moving in the right direction with those, provide an update. One of the things we'd like to discuss with you is maybe breaking this apart into several workshops, where we could take each strategic priority, but most likely starting off with the actual city's city vision, which comes directly out of the comprehensive plan as a starting place. We also want to readdress the mission statement with you all, and kind of condense that a little bit. We have some ideas on tweaking that a little bit. But then, taking each item one by one, as we know that overall, the general wishes of council is water quality and water management control is priority number one, but kind of doing a deeper dive into this CIP that relates to this, and also give you an update on those projects, and then determine future projects. So maybe taking these on individually, and then getting ideas from council as we do that. Typically, we've done this in an all-day session, but we think that we have quite a few projects and quite a few grants, federal and state grants, and it would really be, I think, easier for us to get in a more detailed level with you all of maybe breaking some of this up. So we wanted some direction, if you'd like to move forward with that. We also thought we could focus a little bit more on our strategic priority regarding communication with you all, with each other, with our legislature, and with our, and with our Lee County representatives as well, and taking different roles in that communication as well.
I would support this, and I would hope that we could at least start the process as quickly as possible after the first of the year.
I'm in, I'm in favor of that. I think the workshop environment, and we had the experience where almost all of us attended the Everglades Wonder Garden workshop that we had, and I thought that went very well, and I, for one, learned a lot there, and I thought the dialogue was, was excellent. No decisions were made, which is, which doesn't happen in a workshop, so we can handle topics like that in a very effective way when we can really talk to each other. So I'm very much in favor of doing this.
Do we need a motion?
No, I think we should, if you wanted, I think we discussed making our first meeting in February, a workshop where we went into the potential of the bamboo, but we could start there with the, with the vision statement and mission, and start there in a quick, a quick overview of strategic priorities, and then, and then schedule our next ones based on, based on direction we received there.
All right, so we're talking February 3rd?
Correct.
That we're going to have basically a workshop with a little bit of the business we have to take care of, and a regular Wednesday morning?
That one's an evening meeting.
That's an evening, I'm sorry, yes. Okay, I approve of that. Call for a vote, or?
No, I think we have direction from, to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
And then my last item is informational only. As you recall, after election, we discuss city council appointments to our various boards and committees. We provided the current list to you all. Previously, what we've done is provide this as an introduction, and then each of the council members have given myself and Debbie a list of those that you're interested in either to continue serving on, or those you'd like to serve on. We can compile that list and bring that back, so you can have a discussion and go through each of them individually. So no action on this tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let's, let's take care of that. Okay.
Yes, and the only other, a quick update I will provide you, COVID-related, is I did hear from our fire chief, DeWitt, and just he wanted to inform you all that they have received notification that they, that they will be given the opportunity soon as first responders to receive the vaccine. There's no date yet, but they're, they're starting the communication, so that's moving forward. At this time, we, that, I did not have an update from the sheriff's office on that yet, but the sheriff's office just wanted me to provide an update, that they were able to complete their shop with a cop this past Friday, was very successful, and they're looking at some toy distribution to Benita Springs Elementary and some other area schools this week. So that's their, their Christmas programs that are going on now, but they'll inform me if, regarding any opportunity as them, as first responders, to receive the vaccine, but that was the report from our two divisions of first responders.
Is it mandatory for them to receive the vaccination?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask Arlene a question? Do you have any update on the beach? Have you looked at it since they cleaned it up, or what's the story?
We're hopeful that this cold front that's coming in, I believe the worst of it was the beginning of the week, is what I understand. There was no cleanup efforts that I'm aware of that happened today. But what I understand is there's hopeful that there is, the cold front that's moving in will push the bloom further out. Unfortunately, we were the most hardest hit in Lee County. Sanibel is experiencing some of it, and I understand Barefoot Beach and a little bit further south in Collier. But I don't have any further updates from Lee County today, but I think the worst of it was earlier this week. But anyway, it was noticeable, and the health department did, did place warning signs as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Amy, the other day, when the fish kill came in, the water was, the water was going north. The wind was coming out of south, and the water was spinning, and it was a red, brown water color. Now, today, it's a nice green, the waves are coming straight in, I don't see any new fish coming in. So hold your, hold your breath, and we might, we might be over with it for this time. You never know, it comes on back.
I know.
So, so far, so good.
Yeah, I haven't been to the beach, so I didn't see it myself.
It wasn't so bad. It was only like two feet wide. It wasn't that the waves were so big that it spread it all out, and it looks good today.
Thank you.
But we'll see what happens tomorrow. Thank you, dear. We got the mayor, mayor report? Let's see. Mayor and council?
Do you want to start?
Mayor and council members report, is that right?
You want to start with District 1, and this is just the opportunity for each member to...
I just have, well, I already talked about the Everglades Wonder Garden workshop, which I, we all, most of us attended, and I thought it went very well. I also, oh, my goodness, I also did a PSA for the frontline heroes tribute that's in downtown Benita, and I want to just call out Laura for her innovation there, and I think it's a really good project there, and I hope that we get a lot of people to take the time to put their photos and their little ornaments up there that we just started, I think, a couple of days ago. There are only a couple of photos in there, but it's worth going to look at it, and I think, I look, I look forward to seeing more faces up there to thank our frontline heroes for all the efforts that they made. And I, and just I want to share an experience that I had, because I did, Tad's here, but I did have a talk with Tad Mast, who's doing a piece on review of 2020 and looking forward to 2021. And in the process of getting ready for that discussion, I reviewed all the minutes and the agendas for 2020, because when I was thinking about it, I couldn't remember what we did in 2020. All I could think of is all the interactions that we had about COVID. And what I find so remarkable is just, I made a list of the things that we accomplished, that our city accomplished in 2020, and it was just so inspiring, and I'm so proud of what the staff has done, and what the council also has done, because we were partners in there, because we didn't just sit home in our little house and never went out. We did our work. And I, if you want to go through that exercise, I think it was very uplifting for me, and I recommend it, and I really appreciate what the staff did and all the hard work that we, as a city, did pulling together to get some things done, and we did some really important work, and we should be proud of it. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Purdon, District 2, do you have any comments today?
Yeah, just two quick ones. Mr. Mast, another one of the big things that we did when I was giving you the list that I did not recall, was the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July was awesome. We were the only place in, I believe, a three-county radius that did it, and our staff just knocked that out of the park on very short notice. So I think that was a pretty big thing, it kind of uplifted people, and I didn't mention that when I talked to you, but I just thought of that when you were sitting here. And the fish, I want to give a shout out to our water steward and Dr. Parsons. They were out on the water immediately upon the fish kill. They've been out every day since. They've been doing extensive testing on, on both the water and the fish that they've taken up, so hopefully we'll get some interesting news on that front, too. So that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Laura, please.
I attended the Southwest Florida Chamber of Commerce Christmas holiday party. It was wonderful. It was wonderful, and I wish everyone a lovely holiday season and hope for a better year, and God bless America.
Amen. Mr. Forbes, how about you next? I want to be last today.
Yeah, I have a couple things. Number one, being on MPO, I want to make everybody aware of something that's going on, and it's kind of, the governor put a mandate out to the legislation last, the last session, that he wanted a study of building a new superhighway toll road in the middle part of the state. They have a committee that meets, that met monthly for a while, working on this, sometimes it was twice a month. They don't have a route figured out yet, but it's basically, I can tell you this, that any place that you would put it, it's going to go from end to end through environmentally sensitive land. What I've done is given you a little write-up on it, it's called MCORS. I'm going to give you a link to an organization called Thousand Friends of Florida. They have webin hours on this subject. I, I know that Naples is considering possibly opposing this. I, I watched the webinar of Thousand Friends of Florida. I've talked to Don Scott, the executive director, and it would appear that they're, they're very much environmentalists, but their, their attitude is, we want to stake out what we can to protect the environment that the road will be going through. Don Scott, the executive director of MPO, has made a very significant observation. First of all, the funding for transportation projects will be much reduced for the next four to five years. The first round of the budget cuts for the, affecting this current year will be available, known to the public around the first part of January. Because of that, this project will not progress nearly as fast as was projected. Just the PDNE study, and that's not even a real, I mean, that's a study that kind of held feasibility and look at environmental impact, and that means you have to have a route. It's going to cost about 70 million just for that. This is very, very expensive. They've ticked around numbers like 10, 12 billion dollars, but the Friends of Florida, Thousand Friends of Florida, they correctly, and I think we would agree with it, the real cost will be more like maybe 20, 30 billion dollars. As a toll road, it won't pay its own way. What will happen, it'll all depend on what governor that succeeds to Sanus wants to do. If that governor is pro-this, you'll probably see movement forward on it. If that governor has a different priority, you'll probably see it kind of fade away. But this, this gives you a little thumbnail sketch. I'm going to get you more information on it. I don't, I personally would say, I don't know that we want to ever oppose it, and we may want to come up with concerns, things we would like to see, because you're, the governor, this governor is behind it 100%, so just want to make you aware of that. Second thing, because of the fish kill and the red tide, I was checking with Florida Gulf Coast University, and they were able to finally get me a phone number today, and we'll, we'll send it out to everybody, that you call this phone number, and we want to get it out to the public, and if, you can, once, once they answer, then they'll ask you what county you're interested in. I think Lee County is number four, if you want to look at Collier, it's 15, and then you can look at beaches of various cities. Benita Springs, I think, is number 15 or something like that, but we'll have all those codes for it. We're going to get it out to the public. That way, they can call every day before they even think about going to the beach to find out whether there's a fish kill that's washed up, whether there's red tide and so on. So it's a good, it's a good thing, doesn't cost us any money, but people don't know about it. I think that getting that number out will be a good thing. That's it.
I'm good, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, happy holidays to everybody. Thanks.
I'm sure you've seen the news over the last week or two about the exodus of tech firms out of California into Texas, and you may have seen the news about some of the major back office operations and customer-facing operations of Goldman Sachs and JP Morgan possibly moving to Florida. I think that's probably just the beginning. BlackRock has already moved operations to the Miami area. I think that creates sort of an issue that we need to be aware of in Southwest Florida. I have not heard of any of the big financial firms wanting to move their operations here, but as, as the whole area from Palm Beach down through Miami continues to absorb businesses moving out of the high-tax states, I would think that's going to put pressure on Southwest Florida with respect to people who are just tired of living with the traffic and the hassles of living in Dade County, Palm Beach County, and so forth. So I think the growth rate for Florida is going to increase, and we need to keep in our thinking, you know, how we're going to handle infrastructure, water quality, and so even just the amount of water that we have in Southwest Florida for residential and commercial use, so. I think this exodus of the high-tax states is going to be something that's going to, we're going to have to take into account as we do future planning. I just wanted to comment on that. Thank you. Well, let's see. The spirit of the season is in Benita Springs Park. I was there one night, they had a concert band, the next night they had a dance recital, the next day they had another band. The park is absolutely beautiful with all the lights, the new green grass and the red mulch. I'd like to thank and compliment Nicole and her elves for the work that she's done with our park. It's absolutely beautiful. I could go on about how great the city is, but let's go on to, any public comment at this time? Okay, excuse me, I went out of order there. Approval of the minutes.
So will.
I just had one comment. It lists three sets of minutes, but there was only two sets in the packet.
I have three.
We have three.
In the packet I had, it only showed the 11, 11-4, and 11-18.
I believe that Debbie took one out because there were some unflattering comments by the deputy mayor.
Oh, okay.
You, you want to ask that one? Okay. You call for a roll call?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, now we call for public comment on anything that's good for the city or, or not. I don't see any, so, any other business come before us?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Say it.
We're adjourned.
Thank you very much.